If we would please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, and every one of its citizens. Thank you. Chair, you want to do the roll call?
Lyon.
First ward here.
Shaffer.
Here, first ward.
Dylan.
Here, second ward.
Massey.
Here, second ward.
Ruffin.
Here, third ward.
Marhaber. Carter.
Here, fourth ward.
Carpenetti.
Here, fourth ward.
Brian Marhaber is out. He's in the hospital at the moment, but doing really well and hopes to be back with us quickly. So we'll continue the -- any comments from the floor on this agenda? Okay. The first one is to the approval of the minutes from August. Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Next one is approval of the bills. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the monthly reports, the city clerk, city treasurer, and court clerk for August.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our first resolution is Resolution 41, appointments to the zoning board. We have two leaving and two new ones coming on, so do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Okay. This is -- we'll start the discussion. This is Kathy Christopnic and David Beers leaving for work-related issues, and we have Bianca Rico and Ralph Renzulli who'll be coming in to take their place. So do I have -- we should have a roll call for this. Any other -- go ahead.
I just want to comment, I've done a lot of work with Ralph Renzulli who's the Urban Renewal Board, who's had quite a few years, especially when I was a county councilman around, and he was great to work with, he's a decent guy, he's a really smart guy, so I can't say that I could have helped.
Both are business people, and they have backgrounds in rehabs and zoning and a lot of different things, so I think they'll have good tools to be able to pull from. Anyone else, any other comments? Okay, can you do a roll call?
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffin.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Carpenetti.
Yes.
Okay. Our next one is Resolution number 42, which is we're looking for approval to go to a public hearing on a local law number three, which is public camping. Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Do I have a second? Okay. Do I have any discussion? This particular one for our audience is about a camping law on the streets. A lot of the communities up the line have embraced this and have gone through, you know, working with a camping law like this. So we have two camping places in the city of Little Falls. We have Moreland Park, and we have Marina, and both are available. There is a permit fee, but both are available for camping. But if you wanted to camp in the middle, put a tent up in the middle of Main Street, that would fall under this camping resolution. So it gives the police the opportunity or the strength in what they're doing that if someone needs to be moved out of a public place, they have the authority to do that through law. So that's what we're looking at and wanting the public to weigh in on it.
I'm just noticing that it says that the hearing should be scheduled to hold on set time of clear, which is today.
Thank you.
It's a typo, obviously. Thank you for finding that.
It will be at the October meeting.
October, sorry about that.
I'm at my office type of.
So any other comments?
So this is for public places only, right? It has nothing to do with private property. You still have to go to private property on landowners to call if you don't have the problem, thanks, why?
If you want to camp, or the kids want to camp in the backyard, you're safe.
Okay, yeah.
This is just public places. Because of the transients and, you know, so much that we have going on these days, a lot of the cities have gone this, or communities have gone this direction. Herkimer did it just recently. Waukegan is following suit. So it's, you know, it's kind of along the lines of a nuisance regulation, so.
Because I was thinking of last year, last year or before, down by the Old Gilbert Mill, that encampment that was down there, and you'd be taking out, that was on the landowner to call and fire it up and do the actual charging, saying you don't do charges against them to get them out of there.
Yeah, and Nick, do you want to explain the difference between private, the private land and the public?
It's as simple as spelled out on the Constitution, as everyone knows, you have a right to do with your private property. I imagine, I don't know if we have, because we're eight months into this, some communities charge individuals on private property to help house camping, you know, to have campers and tenants, others children, of course. But this law was legislative intent, I really think, is due to increasing homeless population. If you were to, and I don't know that I told you this, Mayor, I've got the ability to go on to the New York State Local Law website, if you will, there are many, many communities ahead of us, not just our local ones that are doing this, but I think the good idea is, for instance, in Herkimer, they were all down, I recall, the old dump site, and there were forty, fifty tents down there, John, and he was a kid, and went down there fishing, and no idea. And then they moved from there over to Waukegan on some public land because they knew that the municipalities had an awful lot of difficulty, we'd least foreshew them away. Private camping, trust me, but anyway, that's the intent. We're not trying to hurt anybody here, it was just we thought, the chief and I started the stop for, I don't know, USC, decided to present something and see what the mayor thought, so that's really the nuts and bolts of it. Because there's some tools to deal with.
And it's up to the discretion of the police officer at the time to look at the situation and see whether it needs to be applied or not. But as Paul, I think that it's a public safety concern, and Herkimer, for one, you probably noticed, that they had a stabbing in the area that they had a big congregation of homeless people, and it just got out of hand. So I think they had already started this no camping ban or resolution to address the community before that happened, but it gave them the ability to move people along to safer areas.
They went down with the buck, wasn't they?
Yes, they did. So we're trying to be empathetic, at the same time, we need to protect our citizens as well. Any other discussion on this?
Yeah, what about the bike ride, the canal problem there, if you're on that property?
Then it's canal cord property, we have to get the canal cord to work with us to move them. And it'd be just like your land, right, around your house. If somebody was doing that, you would have to give permission to move them. So this is just public property. You know, we had a young lady who decided four o'clock in the morning to move into our lobby here a couple of weeks back, and brought a ceiling fan down, and got her blanket, and got her food, and banjo, or whatever she had, and decided to make a little living room out of the lobby. And so, you know, it happens, and that's, you know, and even the bench out front, she moved from inside to outside to the bench out front. So you can see in other cities that they put tents up, all up and down Main Streets and things like that. So we're trying to preserve what we have and be hospitable at the same time, but a lot of these people have some serious, you know, drug and emotional issues through dealing with it. Anything else? Okay. We need a roll call on this one.
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffin.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Carpenetti.
Okay. The next one, Resolution 43, is for a ban that covers a garbage truck that was ordered, Sarah, was it twenty-one, twenty-two that that was ordered?
Yeah, I think it was at least a year ago. Chad might be better than that.
It's early, April, April.
Okay, all right. And then a couple of police cars. Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Second, okay. Any discussion on this? Just so you know, everyone knows, the garbage trucks take a couple of years, basically, to build, and they're custom built. So it went through the authority from the council, moved it through to having the truck built. It's to replace a very old one. If you go in John's garage there at DBW, everything looks like it's on the showroom floor. You would not know a twenty-year-old vehicle from, you know, something bought yesterday. You go in there, the garbage, you don't smell garbage. I mean, it's the most amazing place. So he gets every little ounce of life out of any of his vehicles. So this one was needed and ordered. Now it's time, they're ready to deliver this next month, so it's time to pay. So that's where we are with that. The police cars, we have three of them that we really need, they're over a hundred thousand miles. One is over two hundred thousand miles, and we're throwing a lot of money away every single month trying to keep them on the road. Went after two different grants, and we did not, we were not successful with the grants, so it's time to, you know, put it into a ban that we will eventually do a long-term bond for and stretch it out over a number of years. So those bonds will stretch it out for the life of the vehicle, and with police cars, it's usually like ten years, and with a garbage truck, that could be, you know, twenty years or better. So it just depends on the vehicle, but that would give us a little bit more time to pay out. So it's, you know, to the point now, we really need to do something. Any other comments? Okay, we also need a roll call on this one.
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffin.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Carpenetti.
Okay. And Resolution number forty-four is in agreement with Barton Le Judas Consulting, engineering consulting firm that we use, for the replacement of the wastewater treatment boiler, or boilers, more than one. This is the bidding and construction phase of the services, and this was twenty-nine thousand eight hundred, if I'm not mistaken. This gets the ball rolling so that we can go out for it and bid. Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, if you're affectionable. So the conditions of the boiler there, is on, is counted on, conditions are?
They don't work at all.
That's good. Logic, yeah.
No, winter is coming.
It clears that right there.
I'm trying to keep my phrases brief. No, they are, there is no functionality whatsoever in wastewater treatment. We have three boilers that are problems for us. We have City Hall, we're down to one boiler, we used to have a backup, now we've got one that decides to act up depending on the day. Sometimes you have heat, sometimes you don't have heat. We've got water treatment facility that they said if they turned it on, they may not be able to turn it off because it wouldn't turn on again. So when they decide that it's really cold enough, they'll turn it on and just leave it on and don't touch it, don't breathe on it. Wastewater is completely out, there's no reviving it. So they will not have heat in the wastewater plant at all this winter if we don't move forward. We're getting a late start, partly because of, you know, our disaster timeframe with finances, put it off the agenda immediately. Everything shut down in May, June, looking at surviving through July, and now things are stabilizing a little bit, so we're looking at, okay, we've got to take care of the guys in the wastewater treatment area. So it's pretty tight. Okay, anything else? And we do a, well, we already did the roll call.
No, we have to do a roll call. I did, I did.
You didn't do it, let's go ahead and do the roll call then.
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffin.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Carpenetti.
And the next one is Resolution forty-five. This is an MOA between the city of Little Falls and the union CSEA. It originated from the police department. They were requesting the ability to bank their vacation days to be able to help out fellow officer who is, has run out of their sick time and their vacation time, medical leave, and so they wanted to be able to share some of their vacation time, and we just didn't have the capability in the current contract. So it's a one-sentence change, and the union signed up on it, I'm just looking for approval to also sign up on it. Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Okay, any other discussion?
We shouldn't officially do that, like I told you years ago, we had some, you know, even for Joe, he was very sick, and the guys were, you know, he was on the house. It was unofficial, but we did that.
Yeah.
All the departments would help each other, too.
I think it's a nice idea. Private companies do it all the time, it's just, it's a good thing to have, and somehow it just over the process ended up getting left out. I think they had it previously. Any other questions, comments? Roll call?
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffin.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Carpenetti.
Okay. Do we have any new business? Old business? Comments from the floor?
Mayor, I'd like to comment on the wonderful job that they do on Tuesday night, like it was a great job. I went and watched the fireworks the other night, they were pretty spectacular, and a lot of people, like, just my hat's off, Mike, every area works very hard on that, and it ends up being a real boom for a lot of kids in the area to go shopping with cops. So my hat's off. Just to note, this year we jumped from twenty to thirty kids, election, thirty kids shopping with a cop, second week in December. Thirty kids, we've got so many, it would have been had to do with two shifts, and that's not a bad thing.
That's wonderful.
And there are all the kids, there will all be kids from Little Falls.
Last week's fireworks were incredible, but the show is south, too. The number of cars you had there was wild. It was really impressive.
I can't talk like that, because some of the entertainment, it was, they draw a big crowd, but that's all part of the game.
It was a good evening. Thank you for doing all the material with the questions. Okay, any other comments from the floor? Move on to mayor comments. As you know, the finance still is my number one prior priority. We've seen some steady progress with what we've been working with. We have a plan, and the plan is working. We're very rigid, Sarah is very, very rigid, as am I, and between the two of us, we've been holding everything really lean, but it is working, and it is allowing us to get to revenue. And so we did, we had a RAM that we moved through, that we talked about last time, and it came through where, you know, that will borrow against water and sewer, and really help out the cash flow as we come around the fourth quarter into the first of the year. So the cash position today is one million twenty-seven, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars. And when I talk about cash, our cash position, keep in mind that a million dollars sounds, well, that doesn't sound too bad, but when you look at what it costs to run the city, our average burn has been about eight hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty in payroll and eight hundred thousand total. So that's not a lot of life. We are stabilizing, we're going forward, we're doing fine, but I would like to have six months of life. I would like to have a year of life in reserve. So we're running lean, but so far, so good, everything has been breaking in to our advantage, and we are watching cash flow projections again very closely, and so we don't anticipate any obstacles. We should be smooth sailing as we come around, but it's still not without challenges. We don't need tornadoes running down Main Street, we don't need big massive floods, so no storms that take everything out, you know, it is very, very lean. This month, we have right now around five hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-one in reserve funds, so it's the sub-fund to our, you know, fund balance. We call it our squirrel away fund. It's where we hold things that we know we have a big payment coming up, so we're putting it in reserve, we're not touching it. And part of that, of course, is the amount of money that every month we're setting aside, a hundred and seventy thousand for the pension fund that will come due in February, February first. So that, and also, we've been sending the thirty thousand a month to the retirement as part of the plan that we had set up earlier in the year. So right now, we have a couple of big things coming out, is we have a large amount of owed taxes from the watershed area. That's a hundred and fifty thousand in taxes that we pay for the land that we have up near the watershed, so that'll be happening. But on the other side, we, payroll might reduce a little bit because we're going to have the summer help coming in, so that's where we are. We have right now seventy-two thousand in sixty-day payments that are going out the door over the next few days, so that's very good, and that's really worked for us. As a general balance of what our total payables would be, it's about two hundred and thirty-six thousand. So as you can see, when you look at that and you look at what our fund, our current cash position is, it doesn't take much to whittle that down to next to nothing. So very, very guarded with them. We're continuing with the sixty-day payment schedule. It's allowed us to be able to maintain a level bank account at a very comfortable level, that allowing some of the revenue to come in to offset some of it, where before, you know, we didn't have that ability. So that has been working. August was a really big month. We had two hundred and four thousand come out on a water filtration plant bond that is a bond that stretches out to twenty thirty-five. We had a hundred and nine thousand on a bridge bond that exists until twenty thirty-two, so long-term bonds. That's why when we're talking about bans, bans are short-term notes. And so what we've been doing over the years is we just, as soon as the ban is matured, usually a year, we're paying it up, paying it up, and financial advisors has been so bright as far as working with us and talking about how other municipalities work with the, between the ban and the bond. And the bond essentially, once you have the dollar amount that you know is fixed, then you move it to a ban, or to a bond. So bans are temporary, bonds are long-term. Bonds allow you to move it out over a number of years, which really makes a difference. Some are twenty, thirty-year, even longer, depending on that type of vehicle, or if it's road work, whatever it happens to be, each one has a different lifespan. Getting to the end of the year, I mentioned the RAM, so that, we should receive that September the twelfth. We have an AIM payment that came in, the remainder of the AIM payment that is a temporary municipal assistance funds, that was a hundred thousand, that was remaining on the money that we took previously to make it through July, that has come in, so we're good, we're clear with that for twenty-four. So we'll be looking forward to using it again in twenty-five, I'm sure. We review every single project, every piece of equipment that is placed in front of us between Sarah and I, and going to check fifty times a day to check on different things. We are really working it hard and looking at the plan, borrowing for enough as we get into our tan money, which will take us around the corner into twenty-five for the first six months of twenty-five. So we should be good, we're, there is a possibility we'll have to, in November, look at another ban for some water treatment things. We're looking at that now, my preference would be not to, but there are some things of emergency that we don't really have a choice. So that's pretty much where we are. The EFC UV bond closed, we have a UV bond coming due, and we will be using grant proceeds on that from a larger UV project to pay it off, so it'd be one less ban on our plate to work with. We are looking at doing budget modifications. Our budget that we started with in January makes little sense now, knowing where we are. So we need to revise the budget, but we also need to do a budget for twenty-five, and I'm thinking we just move on to twenty-five and really focus on twenty-five. We know the numbers now, we've got solid numbers from our accounting firm, and I'd like to get that nailed down sooner rather than later, so my preference would be let's go into the next year, having it done by January if possible. We tweak it after January, that's perfectly fine, but it certainly would give us a little, a better perspective of entering the year than we've ever had. Moving on to other things, a couple of grants I'm going to tell you about. Any questions about the finances from anyone? Okay. We have, I don't know if everyone knows about the homes grant that we do every year. It's a four hundred and fifty thousand, I believe is the number, project grant that allows us to help those low-income people who have owned houses and need a roof, they need new windows, their porch is falling apart, things like that, and the city's been doing it for years. This particular grant we're working out of came out last year, if I'm not mistaken, and we typically look at doing nine or ten homes, whatever we can get in. We have already done five homes, and around town that desperately needed, some of it's, you know, lead paint, some of it's, it could be anything, but railings for staircases, a lot of good, good work is being done for households. A lot of them are elderly, they've been living in the house for a number of years, and just don't have the means or the physical ability to do any of the fix-ups themselves. So it's a nice grant, and we're pleased with where we are. We're hoping that we can get nine homes out of this particular budget. The other thing that you've probably heard about from different people around town is the DRI improvements grant, and that is a six hundred thousand dollar grant for storefront facade improvements. It ranges from a lot of different things. You could fix up an apartment in the upper level, you could even get equipment in there, it's like a great big monster pizza oven or something that is a fixture that will be with the building from now until the end of time, things like that that you would find. We've had a lot of interest, we've had a million dollars' worth of ask, and we have four hundred and twenty-eight, I believe, thousand that is available in that. We have consulting fees that come out of it. So we have in tier one, which are those that had their applications completed intact, and they're very, they're specific as to what the project is, and it is eligible. We have seven right now that we're working with. We'll go to the next tier once this tier is finished. And then both of these projects are done through our Urban Renewal, and they're managed by Urban Renewal and CT Mail, Jim Thatcher, works with us on these as well. The tier one, we have block seventeen, you know, the former Ed and Bud's, they're part of our tier one. Gigi's is part of our tier one. Gavin Mahoney is part of our tier one. We have Kathy Christman, who purchased a number of properties on Main Street, she's part of our tier one. David Horre, Horrods, I don't, I don't know him. Five seventy-six East Main, not sure where that would be, he's part of it, roofing and different things like that can go into it. And then the body science folks also are part of it. So that's underway each week, or each month, they move the dial just a little bit further, and, you know, I think you'll start seeing some major improvements happening. I just signed up on one last week, so we should start seeing some things. So it's all good, and so a lot of improvement. For those of you who want to know about the two developments that we have going, we have Rockton Plaza, that's pretty far. we have going, we have Rockton Plaza that's pretty far in the planning stage. We're meeting again with them September seventeenth. And we're hoping to be able to move it to the zoning board of appeals by the twenty-fourth, am I correct, of September. So, it should move through this month, which is great. We have a meeting for planning for Rock, for the Zeta Project, the Reed Street Project on the twenty-fifth of September at six o'clock. All of these are at six o'clock right now because we need to get a full, anything with planning and ZDA, when we take a vote, has to be a super majority. So, we need all of our committee members to be present if we can get that. So, any questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.